Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the White Marsh Board of Supervisors meeting for July 11th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all very much. We're going to turn it over to J.C. for the announcements.
Thank you, Fran. The July 4th parade was a great success. Thank you to everyone that came out and participated in making this a successful event. Special thanks to the Park and Rec Department for organizing the parade and our emergency services teams for their involvement and participation in the event, and for Fran and his dance moves.
Thank you.
WTV has gone high definition. All Verizon Fios customers can now enjoy White Marsh TV in high definition on channel 2146. This Verizon channel is only accessible with HD equipment, but Verizon will upgrade or replace set-top boxes at no cost to residents upon request. Toy Story will be the next feature in our Reels and Refreshment event at Cedar Grove Park on Wednesday, July 17th, starting at dusk. Come out and enjoy the night. Ridge Pike eastbound will be milled and overlaid next week. The concentration of the work will be between Ash Lane and Joshua Road. Traffic restrictions will be in place. Please be patient while the county performs this needed improvement. That's all I have.
Thank you, J.C. We'll jump in. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from June 13th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we're going to have a presentation tonight. In attendance are Timothy Mara, a partner, and Matt Beinauer, supervisor, representing Zelenkovsky Axlerod LLC, and they're going to present White Marsh Township's 2023 audit. I'm assuming they're friends of yours, Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Great. All right, come on up.
I'm going to have a couple slides, and I'll hand off to Matt, who's going to go through the whole of the presentation.
I can't really hear.
Turn your mic on.
Is that on? Might not be on.
Better now?
No, still low.
Just make sure the sun... Try it now.
Testing.
There we go.
Okay, all right. So my name is Tim Beer. I'm a partner with Zelenkovsky Axlerod. Just here to present the statements for the audit for the 2023 audit of White Marsh Township. Okay, so, Z.A., as your auditor, we're responsible to perform an audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, that's U.S. GAAS. And as part of our audit, we're supposed to require to ensure that the township's financial statements are presented in accordance with U.S. GAAP. Third bullet point there talks about our opinion. So we are not opining on the township's internal controls, but as part of our audit, we're required to understand, gain understanding of the internal controls, which we have done. And as Matt will talk about in a couple of other slides, we didn't find any issues or discrepancies or problems with the township's controls. So there is no magip letter that's going to be issued this year. There hasn't been one since we've been your auditors. Your internal control is designed properly. So continuing with our responsibilities, in addition to the financial statements, the footnotes, there's also the required supplementary information and supplementary information schedules that are part of that financial statement, their report. We don't, we're not opining on these schedules either, but we are just ensuring that the information is consistent with the information presented in the financial statements themselves, that the information ties out. I'm now going to hand it over to Matt to talk about status of the component units and some of the year-over-year changes.
Thank you, Tim. I'm going to try to use this mic stand. Is that good?
Yep.
All right. So continuing with Z.A.'s responsibilities, we are responsible for issuing an independent audit report, auditor's report, on the township's financials. So we are also responsible for auditing and reporting on William Jean's Library, Barron Hill, and Spring Mill Fire Companies, and White Marsh Community Ambulance. So those audits have started. We would expect to issue them sometime between now and the middle of August. So we're also required to communicate to the board regarding audit results and significant matters, which there were none. And there was no single audit required for 2023, but we do expect to have one for 2024. So here we have the township's responsibilities, which include preparation of the financial statements in accordance with U.S. GAAP, preparation of required supplementary information in accordance with U.S. GAAP. So that includes management's discussion and analysis, budgetary comparison schedules, and required pension and OPEB schedules. And the township is also responsible for the design and implementation of internal controls over financial reporting and compliance. So here we have the results for this year's audit. So we did have an unmodified opinion on the financials, which means in our opinion, they are free of material misstatement. We also had no management letter comments to bring to your attention this year, as Tim mentioned. So there were some new accounting standards adopted that you'll see, but none of those impacted White Marsh's financials in 2024. Sorry, I always miss one slide. All right, so here we have some of the key financial data for 2024. So the net position decreased by 1.4 million. Total assets decreased by 1 million. Capital assets net decreased by 8.8 million. Total liabilities decreased 3.5 million. The net pension liability decreased 1.7 million. The OPEB liability decreased 1.5 million. General revenues increased 0.7 million, and program revenues increased 1.5 million. So here we just have some of the future, oops, skip the gap, the future Gatsby statements and what year they need to be adopted. The big one here is number 103, which changes some of the financial reporting, as they're calling it model improvements. So we will be able to assist the township in implementing these standards in the years that they become applicable. That's really it. So we want to thank you for the opportunity to serve the township once again, and thank Kevin and his staff for making our jobs pretty easy. And with that, I think we can open it up to any questions if anybody has any.
Thanks for the presentations. Any board questions?
I know that your scope did not include evaluation of internal controls, but in the course of your work, did you identify any shortcomings?
No, we do control walkthroughs, so we walk through the process. We pull, we do still pull some sample transactions, and we test every look over everything that way, and we didn't have any issues with what we saw.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Bottom line is to pay all right.
Yes.
All right, thank you guys very much. Thanks for the presentation, your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin, for all your help with this as well. All right. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing to consider conditional use number 03-24 at 433 Bethlehem Pike for Washington to operate a personal service shop, cosmetologist in the VC-1 district?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is open. I'll turn it over to Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the application of Skin Aesthetics LLC for a conditional use to operate a personal service shop at 433 Bethlehem Pike, as stated by the chair. The first item of business is for me to mark exhibits for the township. Township Exhibit T1 is the application, consisting of floor plans, site plans, and photographs, submitted June 3rd, 2024. Exhibit T2 is a letter from the property owner authorizing the filing of the application. That is an undated letter from Greg Harth, owner of the village at Fort Washington Limited. Exhibit T3 is the proof of publication of this evening's hearing that appeared in the Times Herald on June 26th and July 3rd, 2024. Exhibit T4 is the applicant meeting notification letter dated June 5th, 2024. Exhibit T5 is the resident meeting notification letter dated June 5th, 2024. Exhibit T6 is the posting of notice of tonight's hearing that occurred on July 2nd, 2024. Exhibit T7 is the fire marshal's review dated June 13th, 2024. Exhibit T8 is the zoning ordinance compliance review, letter dated June 5th, 2024. And finally, exhibit T9 is the White Marsh Township Planning Commission's recommendation, consisting of a motion recommending approval at its meeting of June 18th, 2024. And those are the township exhibits for this hearing. I will turn it over to Mr. Guttenplan to review the application.
Thank you. This is a conditional use under section 116, 290(c)(2) of the Township Zoning Ordinance for a personal service shop, an aesthetics shop, or a cosmetologist salon. You'll hear from the applicant in a few moments a little bit more about it. It is a permitted conditional use in the VC-1 district in which the property is located. The conditional use was before the Township Planning Commission on June 18th of this year. After a short presentation and a few questions, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the conditional use. And with that, I would like to introduce Mark Sofficles, the attorney for the applicant.
Before Mr. Sofficles begins, I would ask if anybody in the room wishes to obtain party status in this matter? Is there anyone who wishes to become a party to this matter? Okay, let the record reflect no response. Mr. Sofficles.
Good evening. I have a memo I've prepared. If I could just circulate this and then simply act as a summary, and if while I'm heading it out, I can give everyone a brief overview to save everyone some time. My client is this sole proprietor of a skin es- I can't say the word, esthetician.
Correct.
And wants to open a small shop on 433 South Bethlehem Pike. She's setting it up, and I'd like to introduce her, Jasmine Stranek, if you can stand up.
Mr. Sofficles, will she be testifying?
If it pleases everyone, we, I wasn't sure if it was necessary. She testified previously.
She does not have to? I just wanted to know if she was going to say anything. Before she does, we ought to swear her in.
Sure, I think we can waive that, honestly, because I think it's all very straightforward.
Why don't you present the case?
I'll present it.
If you ask her if she would have answered questions accordingly and supports your statement, then we can just swear her in and get her to say that on the record. Thank you.
Do you want to swear her in now, then?
Sure, why don't we do that? Because I have a feeling she's going to testify.
Should I bring her up to the microphone?
Please do.
Hello. If you can state its valuable name for me, please. Sure. It's Jasmine Stranek, J-A-C-M-I-N, Stranek, S-T-R-A-N, as in N-A-K-E-K. If you can raise your hand, please tell us if there are any testimony or evidence matters, if there's some truth, the whole truth, and not the other truth. Yes.
If I could just ask her a few questions. Mrs. Stranek, you are the sole proprietor and owner of Skin Aesthetics LLC, correct?
Yes.
And is your intention, if the board here approves the conditional use, to open and operate a store at 433 South Bethlehem Pike, correct?
Yes.
And is it, it's my understanding that it's supposed to be a one-on-one, you essentially providing service to one customer, correct?
Yes, by appointment only.
And it's by appointment only, in other words, there won't be walk-ins coming?
Correct.
Also, my understanding is that there's a private parking spot, or parking lot?
Yes, there's private parking available behind the building.
And otherwise, do you have a license, I assume, from the state?
Personal license and salon license both from the state.
Thank you. And I, prior to tonight's hearing, I did show you a copy of this memorandum, correct?
Yes.
And it's true, correct copy of what I submitted and handed up prior to convening this hearing. Those are all the questions I have for the witness. If anyone has questions while she's here, or I could just, I could just proceed with the presentation and reserve the right to ask questions if you all have any.
You can proceed.
So you can.
Thank you.
Quick question for Dave. Dave, is this going to be marked as an exhibit?
It can if the applicant wishes it to.
It does not need to be. It's more informational, but for the purposes of the hearing, I don't think, actually, there's no downside in marking it. So why don't we mark this T7?
Well, no, no, no. It would be A1.
Oh, pardon me. A1.
Well, mark as exhibit A1, the memorandum from the, from council. I note that the other part of what you handed up is the letter that had been previously marked as exhibit T2 from the owner, and also photographs that also are part of the application, which is exhibit T1. So I don't think we need to mark them separate.
Thank you. And obviously, what exists in T1 through T6 provides the board some basic background, the testimony of the applicant and the principal for the applicant, along with the fact that this is permitted as a conditional use under section 116, 290(c)(2). Essentially, there is no negative impact to the community in any way, any way or manner. It provides, she is providing a valuable service to the community. There are no traffic or parking issues. This, also, this site was previously used and occupied as a spa. So while my client is not doing medical spa procedures or anything like that, it already was established as a business, as a spa, so it's relatively consistent to that prior use. As you see in T2, the consent has been obtained from the landlord. With that, I open it up. If you have any questions for me or for my client, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any board questions? Any public questions?
Any public, any public comment, not specific questions, but any public comment? Okay, seeing none?
Thanks, Dave.
Dave, do I need to move my?
It'll be accepted.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate everyone's time.
A1 is accepted. Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we're going to come down and go to motions. Do I have a motion to approve conditional use number 03-24 at 433 Bethlehem Pike for Washington to operate a personal service shop, cosmetologist, in the VC-1 district as presented?
So moved.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Jasmine. Good luck.
Thank you.
Going to ordinances. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 1042, implementing a new FOG, fats, oils, and grease reduction program to be managed by the White Marsh Authority to comply with the Clean Water Act of 1977?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McInally.
Yes, at last month's meeting, we had Brent Wagner in here as the executive director of the White Marsh Authority. What they want to do is implement a new reduction program for fats, oils, and greases. Anyone that has a grease trap, they can go in and monitor those grease traps and bring them up to today's standards with that. What this will do is just bring that up to today's standards and let them do the program.
Sounds good. Do we have any board comment, questions? Any public comment or questions? Come on up, come on up to the...
Wanted to say hi and thank you. I'm with the authority, Laurie Hanky, and didn't get a chance to tell you that I would be coming instead of him this evening, but if you do have any questions, I'm able to answer them.
Oh, cool.
So thank you for getting this started. It's very important to the authority and the environment, so thank you.
Thanks for coming out to the meeting. Appreciate that. All right, Mr. McInally, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Ordinance carries. Thank you very much for coming. Do I have a motion to approve the funding allocations for the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act funds provided to White Marsh Township for all the projects as presented tonight and outlined in the July 3rd, 2024 memo from the township manager?
So moved. Second.
Mr. McInally?
Yes, at our workshop meeting, we went through a very similar memo to this. The ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act fund was provided to the township in the amount of $1,926,122.72. We are required to allocate those funds by the end of this year, December 31st, 2024, and to have all the projects completed by December 31st, 2026. To date, we have spent $545,404.16 on the projects you see ahead on the memo, storm sewer projects, AV equipment for this room, the electronic sign down at the corner, township windows on the administrative side, and township windows on the police side. We have allocated two other projects for stormwater already in the amount of $455,000. And what we want to do now is allocate the rest of the funding. As I said, we went through this at a workshop meeting, but I will go through the meeting or the allocations that we are proposing to the board. It is to finish the windows in the township building, which are these large windows here and all along the front of the building, over to the police department, $196,680. We have some painting and concrete repair of this building. The ADA ramp out front is crumbling. We want to obviously fix that. $28,000, new garage doors at the Public Works Garage, $119,000. A new roof, Cedar Grove Barn where we have the camp, $100,000. New play structures for $95,000 at both Cedar Grove Park and Leland. New salt shed at the Public Works Garage, $225,000. That is only labor. We are going to take the material out of liquid fuels, so to reduce some of the costs here, so that's just labor. Some work in the courtyard between the police and the administrative building here, $60,000. Police furniture for $40,000. Utility vehicle for Public Works Park and Rec Emergency Services, $35,385. And I have $35,000 to convert some of the paper in this building to electronics, so we can get rid of the paper. And that would be a multi-year project, but the rest of the money would be $35,000 or anything left over. These are fairly good estimates, but obviously, we do not have anyone under contract, and we'll have to go out to find, you know, quotes and bids if we have to. But we're pretty, pretty certain these numbers will come in relatively where we are here. That would eliminate all the money for the ARPA, $934,565.
That's great stuff. I mean, we got a lot of things that were necessary done with this, so.
Correct. So these projects would all have been in a capital project in some form or the other within the years, so this will really help the general fund and the capital fund moving forward.
That's great. We have any other board comment or questions? Any public comment or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Do I have a motion to approve Delaware Valley Wildlife Management to perform controlled deer call on township open space located on Manor Road in Mequon in accordance with the details provided tonight? And tonight, we have Carmen D'Lelo and Tom Cermarini here from Wisconsin Trail's Deer Management Program. I'm assuming we will have questions for you if you guys want to come up to the podium. I'm sorry. All those in favor? Just kidding, just kidding, just kidding. Come on up, guys, yeah. I've been looking forward to this all day, like to hear what this is going to look like, and I'm sure I'm not the only one.
I'm Tom, Director of Marketing.
Carmen.
All right. So, what's that?
Vote on motion.
After they presented, right? Want to talk about it?
No.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Discussion open. All right. So you guys are going to go down and do the deer call on Mequon Road, and before we vote on it, I guess we're looking for like a little more detail what exactly you do.
So we, Carmen and I started our organization 29 years ago, and that was formerly, we were doing it seven years prior. That's about 35 years' experience running a group of hunters. We formed the group because private landowners didn't want hunters, unvetted hunters on their property. They wanted to know that they had a safe, responsible person on their property. So we started, because of that reason, we started vetting hunters, and it's spread, and we now manage Scucho Center for Biomedical Education, which is close to 600 acres, and it's also very close to being adjacent to the parcel we're talking about. We harvested 46 deer from that property last year. We manage more and more arenas, almost all of Wisconsin Trail property, some of which are in White Marsh, Willow Lake, Four Mills in White Marsh. If you contact Gail Farmer from Wisconsin Trail, Eric Moody from Scucho Center, they will tell you how satisfied they are with our program. We've never had one incident in all the years we've been doing this. We vet our hunters very carefully. We vet them for several different reasons. We vet them, number one, because they're hunting in a suburban situation. We want to make sure that when they encounter someone who's hostile towards them or who's not in favor of what they're doing, they don't have to defuse a hostile situation. They're not going to become confrontational, and that's very important because it happens all the time. On all the Wisconsin Trail's properties, we encounter lakers all the time. We've never once had any kind of situation like that. We vet them in terms of safety, so our hunters are all hunting from an elevated platform in the tree. They're required to wear a full horn, any body harness, to ensure their safety, so they don't fall out of the tree. The other thing that that elevated stance ensures is that in the event they shoot through the deer, it happens.
To shoot from the focal.
Yeah. When we shoot a deer, very often, the arrow goes right through the deer, and it goes into the ground, or if they happen to miss the deer, hopefully it doesn't happen, but the arrow still goes into the ground. So that's, that's what we do in terms of, to ensure safety. As I said, we've had a very strong record. We have, now, we manage Northwestern Philadelphia Scucho Center and some private property, Montgomery County, mostly with pain in White Marsh. We have hunters in Northeast Philadelphia, Bucks County. We have about, total county water area is 45 acres. And the, the area that we're proposing down at the bottom of Manor Road, it's 31 acres. That area is probably one of the easiest places we would ever have to manage. The Scucho Center, for example, has a daycare, had a school, which was Breedwood's Charter School for years, and we were able to operate within, you know, with that going on without ever having incidents. I don't believe there are any public trails down through that property down there. I quickly did a perimeter walk and identified some parking areas, and our Scucho property, a bus up to it on the Philly-Mongomery County line, so we'd have some hunters go in from that area, which we already are, you know, parking at. So we would come in from there, which is not open to the public. And we would also come in from with Pico access way to there right away, and it could probably fit four or five cars. There's a couple other pull-offs we saw on Manor Road, then we'd have to see if it's safe to pull off there, and then definitely check with White Marsh Police to make sure that they realize who we are. Our vehicles all have plate cards on them, which identify who we are. The township would get names, driver's license, or plate numbers of all the participating hunters, so if there was ever a question and somebody saw something going on and reported that number, you could...
So if there was ever a question and somebody saw something going on and reported that number, you could call us immediately. We can say definitely one of our hunters, not one of our hunters. And that's how we try to keep real-time information going with the landowner, the managing authority of the property.
White Marsh PBR gets the roster we have for our hunters now. So they know what to look for in the window. If they see a vehicle they can complain about. If it's got R, placard in the windshield, and it's on a property number nine, they know it's not trespassing.
And we have open lines of communication with the Pennsylvania Game Commission. Officer Jared Check up here and Officer Crown down in Philadelphia now. So we constantly speak to them. A question we always get is what do you do with the deer harvesting?
That's what I was going to ask.
That's a big question. So in, I believe it was 1991, Pennsylvania started a program called Hunters Sharing the Harvest. So since 1991, this program, which is a network of participating bushers throughout Pennsylvania, we donate meat, donate the whole deer to them. They process the deer. They distribute it through their network to food pantries, community assistance programs. Since 1991, they have donated 2.5 million pounds of acid. So the medicine goes to worthy causes, feeds lots of people. You know, some of ours, they may keep one or two for themselves. But most of us are harvesting as many as we can throughout the season, which is a total of seven per hunter. So after two or three, that's when we're donating.
That's great.
Can you talk a little bit about what time the hunt would occur or the call would occur? And kind of how you organize the beginning of it and whether you are on site and kind of what the operation looks like?
So we, we tend to establish protocols for timing with the individual landowner based on the property itself. But for the most part, our archers, the most productive time to be in the woods is an archery in a tree waiting for deer. First two hours of daylight, last two hours of daylight. Certain exceptions to that, when it's very cold out, the hunters going today, because they tend to move more during the day. For the mating season in November, the hunters going today, because they tend to move during the day. But those protocols are always dictated by the landlord and not by us.
And we try to, we work whatever the landowner wants or deems appropriate for that particular parcel. We go with, the more restrictions we have, the less we can do. So on a property such as the 31 acres, looking at that without any general public going through there. Scroogle Center for instance, opens at 9:00 AM. So we're typically out of there by 9:00 AM. Afternoons, we get in there around 3:30-ish simply because, you know, you'll have people coming, children at the daycare. So there's lots of traffic in there. So we kind of adjust where we are in the property according to what is going on in the property. And there'll be blackout days where we'll have, you know, they may have a hayride in the fall. So, you know, we send a group, we have group texts for each property. If there's 10 hunters on the Scroogle property, myself or Tom or Steve, who's the land director there, we send out a text. Hey, guys, we have something going on today. No one on the property, no one on site today. And like that.
So it's more like a certain number of dates that it's open versus one particular day where you're there?
Yes. So we don't do a single day call. That's more with a firearm call where they would come in and within, you know, a week or two, you know, shoot a whole bunch of deer over bait at night. Our season typically goes from about mid-September to the end of January, is it Tom? Monday through Saturday. There's three Sundays that the game commission has allowed hunting for the past four or five years. So I'm assuming that they are on for this year. So it's three and a half, four months season.
And then you recruit the, the actual hunters?
So we always have a revolving bank of hunters. We get contact with people all the time. So typically if someone contacts me, hey Carmen, you know, can you tell me a little bit about Delaware? I'll send them an application. It's a questionnaire. We get it back. Tom and I have looked at it. Usually I can tell right away what kind of experience they have. We're not looking for hunters who are out hunting to shoot a male deer. We need female deer harvested from the properties because that's the key to management.
Right. And why they subscribe is about 75% of the deer, they want to do things that are about their family hunting. Does us absolutely no good.
And time. We need people, we can't say, okay, you've been hunting a property, hey, you show up once a year. Doesn't help us, doesn't help the landowner, doesn't help the perverts. So we need someone who's going to be out there two, three, four times a week. And then we kind of gauge, you know, people here on Saturdays and Tuesdays, this guy can be Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So we kind of work it all out. There's always people on the property to maximize our effort.
Thank you. Can I ask a question? This is probably to you, Craig. Given that this call will be on township property, is there a requirement that we post this ahead of time? And let the public know that it's happening and when?
Yes, we would notify or we would send out notices that this is happening.
And how much leeway would we give them?
Probably as much as we could. Once we have everything determined and know the dates and we can advertise that or send that out with a weekly or it won't be in the newsletter, but.
Great. And do you do this rain or shine? Is this a?
Yes.
Like dependent, weather dependent?
Not for you.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, the rain doesn't stop.
One thing I didn't mention is we also do carry a liability policy that we utilize and we name every landowner as additional insurance. So White Marsh Township, we can copy. Technically, the Landowner Liability Act in Pennsylvania protects the landowner from hunters who might intrude themselves in the property. As long as they don't get permission, the Landowner Liability Act protects them. We get additional insurance as a additional package.
And is there some sort of reporting that you do on like the numbers harvested?
We do.
Do you keep numbers on all?
Yeah. So typically, there'll be an area coordinator for each particular property. I harvested deer today. I text the area, we're gonna harvest a female deer this morning, 9:00 AM, tag number. We go that way. And then there's someone within our group of hunters who does all the data. At the end of the year, we put a report out, each individual property, and then combine.
And knowing what you know about sort of what the deer are doing these days and also the size of the property that we're looking at? What would be the estimate of the harvest?
That property, those deer are continued to herd is the same deer as Scroogle Center. And along with another track inside the subdivision off Stephen Lane, 18th and 11th. So the deer bounce around. In the Scroogle Center, as I said, we got 46 guys a year. I would expect that number to go up by at least eight to 10 with access to this property, maybe more.
I'm thinking if we had six hunters in that particular parcel, running on a regular basis, I think 15 to 20 out there, we could easily do. Yeah, we need to get in there. I was in there when I was a kid. That was 40 years ago. And I know it's grown over and I know a lot of it's fenced in. So I'd have to get in there and really look around and see what kind of activity is going on in there. We put cellular trail cameras out, which patent deer movement and we kind of get an idea of what's going on. You know, and we'll set up a quarterly.
I can tell you, we've been hunting Scroogle Center 22, 22 years. The first several years, we had 12 to 13 hunters. We harvested 120 the first year, 118 somewhere in there.
Wow.
Second year was the same, close to that. Now we're down to a maintenance level. If we get 35 to 45 deer there, we're kind of doing a good job of preventing, you know, populations from going exponentially. But I can tell you, if we just anecdotal walked through there, when we first started to do the management, there was zero hunters. You could walk in that woods and sue forever. Now they're riled everywhere. I'm not saying the deer numbers are where they should be. The only way to really get the deer number where they should be is to take a, a rifle call and that's extremely expensive. But what we do definitely has added.
Any other board comment? Any public comment, questions? All right, come on up.
Bruce Barker, resident for 24 years, avid bowhunter for about 50. I have several concerns about allowing an organization that is certified expert archers. I like to know who certifies the archers. They're self-certified. So you don't have an outsider who's sort of certified.
Well, you know, they need to be, well, they need to take an owner education.
Will you come up to the, come up to the podium then?
So yeah, they need, our archers are required to take the owner education. But we, we watch the archers shoot. We meet with the archers. We watch them shoot. We interview them to get a feel for what kind of hunter they are, what their track record has been harvesting deer in the past. For instance, if you were a potential African, I mean, if you have any antlers, deer, you're representing a deer. I don't care about your bucks. I really don't. I want to know if you get 5D antlers and deer tags and you utilize them. Is that the person I need? And also, I interact with the person if they're going to be represented because our hunters are representing one in a household. But that's what the tier is important to.
So you're self-certified? You don't have any one like Pennsylvania State Archery Association or any of those. Okay, it's kind of like me. I don't know if you're familiar. Fred Bear is, he's kind of a very famous archery hunter, saying, I'm the greatest archery hunter since Fred Bear. Unless you have an organization that's certified and to say that expert archers, I have some doubt there. Also, Barb, you've taken walks or just strictly analyzed there. I didn't hear you say.
No, yeah, we generally do our hunters the option to take any buck, about one legal buck a year, a panel a year. We do our hunters the option to do that. On certain properties that I manage, I tell the hunters that I'm the no industry buck, being a two and a half year old buck, that's personal. On this property, if you see a buck, if you're satisfied with putting your one buck tag on it here, that's fine. As long as you're not done hunting, definitely continue harvesting.
So why not own just those? Because that's how you control the population. And on a 31 acre plot, how effective is this call going to be?
We recognize the fact that hunters are making a big sacrifice.
Yeah, I've been making it for 50 years.
I have, I've been here on a bowhunter. So we recognize the fact that you're making a big sacrifice. Most bowhunters, if they see a large buck, they're not going to want to test it. If it's legal and they're hunting legally, go ahead and take it.
What gear are you using? Compass, recurves, crossbows?
Whatever, whatever the archer is most comfortable. Personally, Carmen and I use all three. I don't use a recurve. Carmen sometimes does. I don't use a recurve for management. And so I have the Compass early season, late season, when I'm looking to harvest a lot more. Those possibly at 25 to 30 yards versus 15 to 20, I'll switch to a crossbow.
And if you see an eight point buck, you say, those are your shots, 15 to 20 yards. Say you see a nice eight point trophy buck with 40 yards, you're going to take that shot?
That's a matter of personal. Everybody's different.
Well, I'm just concerned about safety.
You're asking me personally, that might have applied.
And I'm, I'm just.
From the safety standpoint, a 40 yard shot, if you're in an elevated tree stand, is everything is safe as a 20 yard shot. So everyone has their own effective range. And I'm individually capable to make sure, I'm confident that they have enough experience and they're proficient enough with their weapon and they know what they're doing in the woods. That they're going to make that decision correctly. And I've never had a situation where you have had a problem with that kind of situation. We actually have situations on Wisconsin Trail where neighboring properties, bowhunters shot deer that were not recovered by them, subsequently recovered by us. So the arrow through in the deer proves to be a buck.
Make sure we cover them as well.
We don't, we've been hunting for a long time. I don't take shots on my own.
Scott, if you still have a group of hunters out there, but don't know you can recover for them.
I would say my recovery rate probably in the last five years is over 95%.
So you guys are starting to talk in terms that no one else is going to understand. So I, I'm lost. So I know you're expressing concerns about safety. So I'd like to streamline the question somehow. Like, guys, can you talk about how often you've done these calls? Where you've done them and if there's ever been any issues at all?
We could get some references from you guys too, if you, we proceed with this.
Absolutely. So Scroogle Center is our biggest property, the longest, Wisconsin Trail shortly after that. Scroogle Center, we've removed over a thousand deer, no instances. Getting back to bedding hunters, there's no real certified program anywhere that you can walk away with some type of badge that you are a, you know, like you're an attorney. You're a accountant, if you understand what I'm saying. So what we do is, from our experience, I have 46, 47 years of archery experience. I perform an archery shot, know the industry inside out, upside down. I can see someone shooting. I can tell right away if they can hit a target. Personally, I can talk to people. I can find out about the past hunting experiences. The biggest thing is I ask, how many 5D tags can you have? And when they say, oh, I have one, doesn't help us. You have to have at least five 5D tags.
5D is our management zone.
So, yeah, so to harvest a deer in this area, you have to have a tag, building area 5D.
Harvest antlers here.
Yeah. So most guys will get a tag, obviously, that's being a big tag somewhere else. So when they come to me and say, I have one tag, I'm not going to tie up a spot in our program for a guy who has one tag that may not even come out. So I have a guy who has five or six tags. Personally, I get all my tags down here. And we have a quote at the end of the year, I, if you didn't harvest deer off the property you were on, you're not welcome back this year. We wouldn't take hunters for that reason. We've had hunters in the past who promised us the moon and stars for the harvest, so many devastated. And all they're doing is waiting for a big buck to come out. But that's not what we're talking about. So we, you know, if we find out that that's what you're about, our organization is not for you. We're doing a service for the community to reduce deer populations, not a service to get trophy bucks for any.
Can you get an unlimited number of tags?
Not any more.
Here's two.
Okay.
That's not a deer deer.
Yes.
So how many?
Six antlers tags.
Okay.
One antler tag.
And then, and then it's designated by location where the tag can be actually used?
Six in the entire state.
Okay.
Technically, it's fine. We can still get an unlimited number of tags until they sell out.
Got it.
They've been selling out within the first week of the season for the last year.
Okay.
Even for 5D?
Yes. So to give you an example of bedding you've asked me about, I have a situation that I'm still dealing with from a chronic trespasser on a Wisconsin Trail property in Lowland. And I've been dealing with hot dogs, games, and I gave order, so he's a commissioner.
I'm familiar with them.
So Todd and I have been discussing this situation on what, how best to handle this and how we're going to press for it. Todd initially said to me, well, have you considered bringing in one? Because this individual said several of our hunters. I grew up in Antler. Well, they keep putting these buck into the metal block. I found them a lot of way in the middle. Todd said to me, have you considered just bringing in one? And I said, absolutely not. This guy's demonstrated a willingness to trespass. And he's been trespassing his whole life. If he has no respect for that law, it's not that I respect for any dead law. Todd said, I need to hear that from anybody here.
Has the game commission approved this call? And who has deemed it necessary to?
They don't need to.
I, I understand that. But their input, I think, is important because they have established the number of deer per square mile that an area can hold. Now, I know there's a lot of deer in the area. I also know that a hunt is probably needed. But is this just come up at a meeting where we need to do it without having the hard science behind how many deer have to be taken? Is it?
In the hard, hard science.
Excuse me. I think it's reasonable, just based on where I live and me feeding these deer for the last 10 years with my vegetable garden, my wife's flowers, that this is needed. But I also think it might be fair to the residents like myself who've always wondered, well, why can't I hunt this area? And I don't want to, with all respect, don't want to join your organization. I already belong to several and one of the boards of several. But is it really necessary? Who has deemed it to be necessary? Is it the board?
We, we entertain this discussion because we've had many complaints from residents all throughout the township. Plus with safety issues, destruction in the backyard, and the deer have just been totally out of hand. So we're looking for ways of reducing the population. And this is one of them that's come up. We know that this organization's been around for a long time. They've done this throughout the area and they came recommended. So maybe it's something you would want to join.
Uh, no, I wouldn't want to join.
So to address your question, the science behind it. The best way to establish and need for what we do is infiltrate aerial fire where we want to find the police. Extremely expensive. Townspeople like White Marsh don't have the money to spend on that. So we go by anecdotal evidence, which is the complaints we just talked about. And that speaks for itself.
So that's, yeah, that's why we're here. So anyway, do you have any other, any other comments different than what we've discussed? There's other people waiting to comment.
Sure, sure. No, I was concerned about the certification. Was the game commission active in this decision? No, I was concerned about the certification, was the game commission active in this decision? So no, all my questions have been answered.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, you wanted to come up?
Hi, Deborah Harris, Pilgrim Road. Those of you who know me know I'm involved with environmental concerns in the township. I'm here to support this deer call. Overpopulation of deer is decimating our environment, is ruining our native flora and fauna by being everything deer and they eat, they have literally changed the nature of Pennsylvania's forests by eating every baby oak tree in the state. I mean, exaggerating slightly, but we are literally becoming forest of maple instead of oak because of the number of oak population. I'd love to see this program expanded to the entire township. So, that's my point. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Thank you, Deb.
Craig, I think I saw some Zoom.
Is there something in the chat?
I thought I saw.
Yeah, I see a chat.
Chat.
There's something in the chat.
It says, "What preference would be given to White Marsh Township residents to participate?"
Is there a preference towards White Marsh residents? Come on up, Carmen.
We welcome anyone to put an application in. If they are experienced hunters and we feel they're a fit for our program, we would definitely consider them for our program.
Okay, thank you. Any additional board comment or questions? Any other public comment or questions? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to execute the termination agreement between ECRI and the township at 5168 and 5200 Butler Pike?
So moved. Second.
Mr. McInally?
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Chairman. This involves property at 5168 and 5200 Butler Pike. Back in 1988 and then again in 1992, there were documents recorded for the development of a parking expansion by ECRI. That was the company who, the property owner at that time. The property, the parking expansion never occurred. Currently, Gemma Services wishes to operate a private school on the property and does not need to develop the additional parking. They meet the parking requirements of zoning ordinance for the property. In doing a title search, they came upon the 1988 agreement and the 1992 agreement and they are clouding the title, as it were, for them. And they have asked the township if they would mind terminating those agreements. We said, "I don't think we have a problem with that, but you have to see if ECRI will also agree." Apparently, they do agree and they have prepared two termination agreements, one for the termination of an agreement of covenants and restrictions, and then the other one, a termination of a memorandum of improvements agreement for the board's consideration this evening.
All right, thank you. Any board comment or questions? Any public comment or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the bid advertisement for improvements at Well Street Open Space in accordance with the Monco 2040 grant?
So moved. Second.
Mr. McInally?
Yes, we are trying to move forward with the Montgomery 2040 grant for improvements down at the Well Street Open Space. We have trails going in there, we have a bridge going in there. We have finally got our bid specs together and ready to advertise them, to see what kind of pricing we get on this. So just looking to advertise that and see what, see what interest we have. So hoping the board agrees.
Thank you. Any board comment or questions? Any public comment or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to, for release of funds to satisfy the contract for the 2023 road improvement program in the amount of $29,690.93?
So moved. Second.
Is this going to Krista?
Yes. I can take this, yep. The 2023 road program was mostly finalized with construction on or about December. During that time, we did a punch list inspection and identified some additional paving work that was needed, but because it was winter, had to wait until spring of this year when the weather was favorable. So now that work is done and we would like to pay them and close out the contract. And so I suppose we are asking, because it's a new year, that it needs to be approved for this year instead of last year, is that the case?
I'm sorry?
Because typically, we, construction projects, don't we order approval? I thought maybe that was why it was coming here.
Her question is, the road program was approved last year, why does it now need to be approved again?
Final payment came here, yes.
Yeah, you have to approve the final release.
To make sure that you guys are comfortable with how the road program turned out.
And you're telling us that they completed all the work accordingly?
We did inspect it, everything has been constructed in accordance with the plan.
Those are the words I wanted to hear.
Of the final release.
Thank you.
Is it a full moon today?
It might be.
All right, any board comment or questions? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, let's take a deep breath before we get into these escrows.
She's on a roll.
You ready?
We're going to get out of here.
Here we go. Do I have a motion to authorize escrow release number three in the amount of $130,708.37 for SLD number 02-21 to DP Spring Mill Developers LLC at 561 Spring Mill Avenue?
So moved. Second.
Krista?
Krista, before you start, can you pull that microphone a little closer to you?
As Fran mentioned, this is escrow release request number three for 561 Spring Mill Avenue. This is the townhome development down on 10th Avenue. They're requesting $130,708.37. Following this release, there would be $245,098.86 remaining in escrow. And our office has inspected the site and found the improvements to have been constructed in accordance with the plan and we're recommending this release.
Thank you, Krista. Any board comment or questions? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize final escrow release number nine in the amount of $108,995.97 for SLD number 03-14 to the Knowles at White Marsh for White Marsh Knowles LLC?
So moved. Second.
Krista?
This is the final escrow release request for the Knowles at White Marsh. As Fran mentioned, it's in the amount of $108,995.97. And that would leave zero remaining in escrow. The developer has obtained all their closeouts of their permits, the arborist has inspected the site, everything is constructed in accordance with the plans, and we are recommending this release.
Amazing. Full circle. Any board comment or questions? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the June 2024 expenditures totaling $548,749.44? Payroll totaling $677,860.74? And pension plan expenditures totaling $3,358.52?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the installation of siding at 101 Black Walnut Lane as recommended by Harb?
So moved. Second.
Charlie?
Thank you. This was reviewed by Harb at the meeting yesterday morning. This is in the historic district, but it is a house built in 2001 and they are replacing siding on the property. The Harb had no issues with it and recommended approval.
Thank you, Charlie. Any board comment? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for replacement of roof and gutters at 117 Black Walnut Lane as recommended by Harb?
So moved.
Second.
Charlie?
Thank you. This was also reviewed by Harb at the meeting yesterday. In the same development, this property was built in the year 2000 and they are replacing the roof and gutters on the property with similar materials that it currently has. And again, Harb had no issues with it and recommended approval of the certificate.
Thanks, Charlie. Any board comment or questions? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Any board comment? I just wanted to say, I'm very grateful for Rob Brown. Rob is our director of media. He's now leading our media advisory board and he's been all over the township with that camera. And he's getting a lot of compliments from residents, as a matter of fact. He's there, he's insightful, he's taking good pictures, he's making his videos and his public service announcements have been incredible. And then 4th of July, as hot as it was, he was all over the park and all over the parade with that camera. So I just wanted to say to Rob, we appreciate you, thanks for all you're doing. Any other board comment?
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
I'd like to announce that we had executive session before the meeting tonight, we discussed real estate. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, White Marsh.